Scheduled board meeting of Murphysboro 186 at this time. Terry, Cole.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Judy's absent. Mrs. Brazel?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Here.
Mr. Bieber's absent.
Jeff, would you mind leading us in the question we just started?
Question.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any corrections, changes to the agenda?
Just two minor ones. During public comment, Ryan Dodd will be speaking, our architect. Matt Hickam is also here for our table grant, so if there's any questions on that grant, which is item six, and one small typo that I had missed was it's a K to five ELA English Language Arts curriculum, not K to two, so that small number, two to five, is the big change, so welcome. And Katie Russell is in the back. She was just hired voluntarily transferred last month to our newly created English language learner for our non-English-speaking students. She's the coordinator, so she'll start that in the fall, so thank you for coming tonight, too.
Thank you. All right, can you get a motion to approve agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Approval consent agenda, District 186, regular board meetings dated March 19th, 2024. The tri-county regular board meetings dated March 6, 2024. Tri-county resolution to amend joint agreement. Tri-county bills from April 2024. Applications and reports. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the District 186 bills for the month of April 2024. Do we have any questions for Jan? Hearing none, all accept the motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
All right, who's having communications?
We have three. The first one, To Whom It May Concern, and it's from Lisa Batson. I'm writing formally resigning from my position as a third grade teacher at Carruthers effective at the conclusion of the 23-24 school year. It is with mixed emotions that I make this decision, as I have greatly enjoyed my time at Carruthers and have grown both personally and professionally. I would like to express my gratitude to you and the entire staff at Carruthers for providing me with the opportunity to work within the walls of this building. The support and encouragement I have received throughout the years have been invaluable, and I will always cherish the memories I have made with my colleagues and students. Thank you once again for everything. I wish you and the district continued success and growth. Sincerely, Lisa Batson.
Motion to approve the resignation. So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Wish her well.
The next one's from J.C. Nearing. I'm writing to address my resignation as assistant coach of the Double Dazzlers for the 24-25 season. It is with great sadness that I write this letter and is for no other reason than my last minute plans to relocate this may upon graduation. Being a part of this program has given me the ability to give back to my community and make a positive impact on our athletes. With dance being almost year-round, we don't just coach the athletes on their dancing skills. We act as a mentor, a role model, and for some, an extra parent figure. We teach them life skills, help them navigate plans after high school, and so much more. The Double Dazzler dance team is more than a team. It's a sisterhood and a family. The program continues to improve each and every year. It was a joy to return to the program, this time as a coach, and see all the progress that has been made from when I was in high school five years ago. All the accreditation for that goes to Carly and Emily, who I would like to thank for giving me support and guidance during this chapter. These two put their heart and soul into the program and always look for ways to improve to make it a better experience for the girls. I'm so thankful to have gotten this opportunity. Lastly, I would like to thank the community for the ongoing support, and a huge thank you to Lynn Navara, Cody Ollmeyer, Dr. Evers, and all MHS and District 186 staff for supporting our team. Sincerely, J.C. Nearing.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Who wish J.C. the best on her career journey?
And the last one's from Nathan Hinkle. It's addressed to Dr. Evers, Superintendent, Mr. Herman, Mr. Winters, Ms. Thompson, and Mr. Alexander. It is with much appreciation and support that I formally resign from my position as Murphysboro Middle School Baseball Assistant Coach, with the anticipation of being approved by the board for the head coaching position for the Blue Devil baseball. Thank you for the opportunity. Sincerely, Nathan Hinkle.
Motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's gonna be a nerve-wracking meeting until we approve another position for it.
I know.
I mean, it's about thirty minutes or so.
She's up in the air.
Yeah. This is that time. Hopefully it doesn't bounce off.
It's purgatory.
Fishbowl, we have two fishbowl items.
I'll go first. Dear board members, I would like to personally thank you for the salary increase that you passed at the last board meeting. I have been with CUSD 186 for a long time. There have been a lot of changes over the years in regards to the responsibilities of the paraprofessionals. This salary increase and the ones from the past few years reaffirms my belief that I am working with a school district that values us and our contributions. Again, thank you for the salary increase and acknowledging the impact that we have on our students throughout the district. Best regards, Carol Baggett, MMS paraprofessional. Thank you.
And this is from Illinois Reading Council. Dear Dr. Evers, the mission of the Illinois Reading Council is to provide support and leadership to educators as they promote and teach lifelong literacy. Illinois Reading Council advocates quality literacy opportunities for all learners and serves as a primary organization that provides educators at all levels access to research materials and methodologies to promote and teach lifelong literacy and learning. Support of an active, well-organized system of local and special interest councils and state committees provides a viable network for, lost my place, communication, exchange of information, and grassroots involvement of a diverse membership. The IRC's publications, special projects, conferences, and workshops stimulate personal and professional growth of educators. The Illinois Reading Council would like to thank you for allowing and facilitating the active participation and involvement of Katie Russell and the IRC as the IRC past president and the regional sixth director. We appreciate her willingness to share her time and expertise with our organization members and fellow teachers and administrators. The Illinois Reading Council is the state's primary organization for literacy opportunities. By serving this organization, Katie should prove to be a valuable resource for your learning community. Please plan now to encourage participation in our 2020 IRC conference. I think they got the date wrong. Liberating literacy, embrace love, joy, and empowerment. March 13th of 2025. Thank you again. Carrie Sheridan, Executive Director.
Good afternoon.
Congratulations.
All right, any Freedom of Information Act requests?
None.
All right, this time do recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware of that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Public concerns aside from Mr. Dodd. If not, Mr. Dodd, you have the floor.
Five minutes.
We'll try to go slow.
Every time someone asks a question, you get in five minutes.
Still your spot.
So to jump in, the plans you have in front of you are the boards directly displayed that shows the floor plans throughout. After we quickly go through these, we're gonna jump into a 3D model, shows the exterior and interior of the proposed design. So Ken Holman's here with me tonight, manager in our office. We've been working with the engineering teams. We've met with over twenty of the Murphysboro High School staff, teachers, coaches, various meetings throughout, admin team and maintenance as well, to kind of formulate the goals of the project, what you want, what you need, which sometimes are the same sometimes, wants have to go here and needs come first. But as you're aware, the project site is to the north, the existing gym. The first floor plan shows a side plan of the actual building footprint. You'll see, basically, it's a pretty regular shape, then opens up to some different geometry for the weight room addition, for the weight room wing and locker room portion as well. Another big goal you'll see when we jump into the 3D, the existing school, it's beautiful setting, as you all know. The auditorium project kind of started the new front door to campus here. Our intent is to kind of complete that front door to where the entire, the entire school to guests and to Murphysboro students appears to be a brand-new school when you drive up. The use of materials, you'll see, we're not really introducing a whole lot of different materials to the design plan. Trying to use some of the same brick. These two panels that were included on the auditorium project, they're still in production. We can get the exact match, so that's a great thing to be able to continue on. Some of the concrete, we're planning to use that as well. As far as the floor plan itself, there is a second level and a first level. The second level has some more, this isn't just a basketball gym. There's space for batting cages, space for walking and running track, dance area, dazzlers, cheer. You'll see, it's trying to incorporate uses of this building throughout the year. It's not just a gymnasium, it's more of a, it's more of a fieldhouse, more of an arena when you get done with it. As we go through, you'll see concessions, locker rooms. The intent is PE students will continue to dress in PE locker rooms. The new locker rooms will be for varsity sports and, well, all sport teams. Officials locker rooms kind of in this new wing as well. Wrestling mats will be stored in the old gym and for competition. We'll hang them from the roof structure to kind of keep the new space as clean as possible. But overall, the floor plans, they're in front, there's a lot of time and detail and decisions have gone into it, but this isn't saying that this is exactly what's final. This is just kind of an update on the process. No actions needed tonight. It's just to show you where we are and where we're going with the project. If there's no other question on the floor plan, we'll jump into the 3D models.
Can you all see in the back? Scooch, come over wherever you want to, so you can see it.
So, looking at the...
You can have any, I mean, chair wherever you want.
Looking at the screen itself, you see the new gym is a very big volume. Nice, big cube shape that is more economical because of the simplicity of the shape. But then as you come down, you can see the same materiality that's being brought over to the new gym brick, some of the same aluminum storefronts, some concrete, some of the panel, facade panel systems. But also, as we were going through design, it made sense to kind of create the new entry. So some simple lettering might be added for office, you know, a hundred percent of the students come through these doors day-to-day. But at the same time, a little bit, a little more wayfinding would be helpful. So just some simple lettering on the existing. But as far as that wing, we're not really touching anything more there. Directly in front, on your plans, is a connecting corridor from basically the existing school in front of the old gym to the new arena. Same sort of materials being used, concrete, same panels that continue across. So it'll really, you won't be able to tell that these were built at different times. It's gonna be very continuous and intentional in that design. This is just a corridor. It could be used for the future Hall of Fame going in front of the new gym or the old gym. The intent, though, would be, now it's much safer for all events that if it's a weekend event, or junior high, or even high school at night, no longer will public come in with the students, disturb the office. Everyone will come in through the main kind of arena entrance. And then the restroom facility, the concessions facility, ticketing will all go through this entrance. And then from this shared commons area, you go to the new gym or the old gym directly from that location.
Are there any concerns with the panels, existing panels faded?
You know, it's only been, it's only been about six years. We have some samples fresh from the factory in the office. We'll probably bring them up, hold them up and see how much they faded. I think overall, so most of these are all facing north, so we're taking less, if due south, you're getting a lot more fade. That's gonna help us on that. Everything fades, though. There's gonna be some bid of fading. Overall, they look pretty close to our samples.
I had disagreed on what the materials were and on the drone that he showed during his interview. Mr. Ollmeyer asked for him to stop so that he could show those materials, so yeah, I mean, they're in pretty good, pretty condition right now, because I had argued that it wasn't a wood grain, and it is most definitely a wood grain in Marvel. So I am very sorry.
They could even be a little bit, though.
I am. What are you talking about?
It was a great moment.
It was a great moment. But I concur that it is definitely, they're not faded, they're pretty great now.
The, in creation of the new geometry, we'll have to re-stripe the parking lot or do some new design. A thog might be a statue of some sort in this courtyard. It creates a large courtyard for students, picnic tables, things like that. You know, a thog is, could it be, could it just say Murphysboro? Murphy. Could be a Red Devil. Who knows what that turns into being? Maybe there's nothing at all, but it kind of is a neat photo op. Yearbook photos and team photos. Could be something that potentially the students get involved in actually fabricating the steel of the letters.
In the conceptual, how tall is it?
These are, it's on an eighteen-inch bench, so it's ADA accessible, and then it's three-foot-tall letters being shown right now. Just, you know, just an idea, not anything to dive into one way or the other too much, but it's, it'd be a kind of neat brand pulling up to the school. As we're going kind of to the, we'll kind of do a tour of the outside and then we'll jump in. Similar language happening over here that happens on the existing performing arts entry and the office entry. Red Devil Arena, we could have the school fight song up on the wall just for some pride, but also to show that this is an athletic facility without plastering the crimson and corn all over it. You know, that way it's the same quality, classy materials that are happening everywhere else. And it has hints of being a sport venue without just screaming sport. As we're going around, some different geometries, so behind here's a coach's office, behind here's the boys' locker room, some fire escape stairs, some simple geometries, but on some different angles, you know, you're able to give a little more interest to a large cube building. The large parapets allow us to hide some rooftop units, some HVAC units as well. Then as we spin around towards the football field, secondary entrance, mostly an exit. You know, there's claimed to be 2,000 seats. IHSA wants us to have 2,000 seats to be able to host sectionals and regional tournaments for our class. So spilling 2,000 people out all at the end of the game, especially with the proximity to the parking lot areas, we'll see a lot of people coming out of these entries. The plan is to just have one main entrance that's unlocked to take tickets, to take everyone to the front door, just so the school doesn't have to staff as many tickets and concessions and things like that. To the north, we've got the weight room on the lower level, as well as the multipurpose room that serves as dazzlers and cheer space, a little bit of branding and graphics that shines out to the football complex as well. Kind of a tougher look, a little more, a little more sport, a little more freedom of saying sport without clashing with the education kind of language throughout the front. This side of the building, you'll see, there's a small door to, overhead door here for band equipment to be able to come in and out easily. There's a corridor left that we're not touching, the new addition to the old. There's an electrical room, we have to have some code-required exits. We could fill that up, this space up with a hallway, but then it's just a very expensive hallway. So we elected to push the building over a bit and allow the egress exiting, but also it keeps our ten-foot spacing, because this wing, the CND wings, are not fire sprinkled. The new building has to be fire sprinkler, so that avoids having to have a two-hour fire wall, which by pushing the building over, it pushes it a little bit further to the parking lot, but it saves money, saves 300,000-plus of touching those walls over there.
If you're gonna spend the 300,000, you could add more parking.
You can, yeah, you can, you can find some better spaces to touch. So then, you know, going in, going into the arena, a vestibule, the ticket booth could be set up in here, ticket table. There's another door that comes from the connecting corridor. So connecting kind of corridor, we're calling it, this is the exposed, this existing brick of the gym. We're basically creating a corridor for Hall of Fame, but really it's to get students from point A in the building to point B without having to go through the back end of the PE locker rooms. So this will be used quite a bit just on day-to-day functions, without having to go through the gym space as well. Going into the entry vestibule and then jumping into the kind of gym and lobby itself, 2,000 seats. The intent was to create the, you know, concession area that serves both gym facilities, restroom area over here that serves both gym facilities. This is the set of doors that come into the old gym, so they'll come directly into this area as well. So, you know, if there's a, if there's a weight or a wrestling meet, they could have all the mats set up in the wrestling room, the old gym, the new gym. Everyone uses the same kind of functional spaces throughout. Some countertop seating to have multiple options for different people, but you can also sell those seats. You know, there's chairback seats, but then we have some countertop seating and some different loaves type seating that kind of goes with the trends of, you know, it's not a, it's not a college arena by any means, but at the same time, with some creative decisions, you can get a little more of a feel than a lot of the peers in the Southern North Region. Kind of jumping in, the Inferno, that could be the student section area. Does it stay the Inferno? Who knows? That's just the brand we kind of came up with. But the intent would be for the student section to be directly adjacent to the court, Crimson Express, the band to be on top, so really the students are providing the atmosphere. The fans, you know, come throughout, pay their money and support the teams, but it's all for the students' band and the players throughout to really have center stage. From there, as you go in, you know, media is becoming more and more prevalent. The old gym, you put up a new LED board. The intent would be traditional scoreboards and an LED board in each corner to provide advertisement space, multi-use space for graduation to show those videos throughout. But as you see, kind of a lower seating bowl, and then going upstairs to the track space. Countertops seating around as well. The aisles of the bleachers will go up the fourteen-foot from floor-to-floor hike, so it's continuous. A typical game, you probably wouldn't ever open up this upper bleacher unless it's a Carbondale-Harren matchup or regional sectional event, you know, graduation events. The realm of the daily events and, you know, freshman boys' basketball games, not gonna have 2,000 seats. So the intent is to bring as many people kind of close to the court down low, and then so that upper bleacher and these lower bleachers as well push in. So when it's not competition night, there's spaces for batting cages, spaces for pitching, baseball, softball, different sport uses as well. Courts, two full-length competition-sized side courts are sized. The, let's see, going, there's a couple of different, there's an elevator, of course, some fire escapes. Upstairs, we have the space for the, this would be a hospitality room, could be used for football, soccer, basketball, volleyball, for tournaments, things like that, but also is a multi-use for dance and dazzlers, to have their own space. Mirrors on the wall, small kitchenette to one side to give some multiple functionality. Small banquets could be held here for the math team, you know, who knows what this space could be beyond just your traditional sport. Going downstairs as well, we've got a space, locker rooms are to the right for boys, there's a space for athletic trainer directly adjacent to the court to set up some tables, so students are still within the practice realm. Going through is the weight room portion. Back to the, back to the lobby, could be some trophy cases for more of the sectional championships, the state trophies to be housed there. Could have another cabinet for the team store to sell apparel and school pride throughout. Again, concession stand, back way to the fire egress, as well as coach's office and men's locker room. Going this way, we've got the bathroom area, a couple of family restrooms as well, ADA and single-user toilet spaces throughout. The back hallway is that. It's back egress, so it's emergency egress out of the old gym, mechanical space, and then we go back to the girls' locker room space, officials' locker room, and more just traditional hallways, but nice spaces throughout. One other quick thing to show, I know I'm trying not to take all of your night, I could talk all night if you'd like me to, but the weight room, you know, being seen from the court area. You know, Murphysboro, you are already, in my opinion, you're doing more than many other peers as far as just traditional PE. Most schools haven't come out of COVID PE yet. You guys are rocking weights, you know, building your programs to where it's something to show off all the way through, so that the visibility to guests, but also your own students of, hey, I want to be involved in that. I want to participate. Could be some simple graphics on the wall, but then the weight room area has all the stations set up, a turf area, but also spills out to the football field.
And there's gonna be a garage-type door?
An overhead door that opens up, so that way on nice days, you know, you can work out both ways, back and forth. PE classes can easily participate on the turf field or inside the weight room.
Show them the video board?
The, these video boards?
Yearbook.
Oh, where the Hall of Fame will...
So there's, I actually didn't model that yet. We'll have a Hall of Fame, so it's kind of a touchscreen that goes here, similar to, it's similar to a TV that's been lowered that every yearbook can be scanned in, the Hall of Fame. You can have players' profiles and everything that, it's kind of a neat touch back to history throughout the lobby space as well.
So with the extended seats on this one side, we want to switch to the normal home side?
So, you know, the thought of that was kind of twofold. Originally, we had seats over here as well, on the traditional Murphysboro home. In really kind of looking through it and thinking about it, the intent would be to have visiting team behind their, students behind their bench plus parents and visitors behind that bench, and then it just kind of would spill up from there. Really, on a typical night, you're, unless the capacity increases quite a bit, that upper bleacher's not gonna open. That's gonna be, that's gonna be shut the majority of the time. By having, by having the chairbacks on this side, there's 240 chairbacks, plus there's 110 counter stools.
220?
Top, 110. 110 counter stools as well that the school could sell. You could auction those off at the end of the year, a little bit more fundraising, but it also provides more unique seats kind of throughout. We went back and forth on the sides of the gym. I think it probably makes sense to almost keep it as is, but, you know, that's up for discussions, of course.
The countertop seats, I thought, I've been to hundreds of wrestling meets, and most of the time you have the parents in the stand who are screaming at the people who are standing in their way, and with, you know, with so many countertop spaces, those parents who want to watch their kids bout, they can pretty much get on three sides to an area that won't obstruct the visual focal point of like the patches for other people, like, so I thought that was pretty kind of neat, you know, and obviously they'll even have the crimson area on those nights where Crimson isn't playing for events that, you know, parents want to be closer to get a good video of their child, so. And then dazzler solo stuff that they perform in video and submit, and will be able to be recorded from different angles, so. Awesome, lots of care and thought.
You mentioned wrestling in the current gymnasium, but is there space for more than two mats in this space?
Yeah.
We could do six mats total.
Six mats?
Three in each gym.
You could do three in each gym, okay.
Have a huge tournament, which Coach Baker's already pondering.
Right.
For down the road.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. And the same question for volleyball. I mean, how many total nets could we have?
Two games at a time.
You could, you could set up two side courts for volleyball if you needed.
We don't have the markings.
Right, right now, we're, we're planning on not, we're planning to have the volleyball markings for the main competition court, but not for the side courts.
Because then it gets kind of busy when you do, if you do.
No, I get it. I'm just thinking about hosting those... I'm just thinking about hosting those higher level.
You wouldn't want two games going on in one gym, that'd get pretty loud. You'd run a game in each gym.
Like when you run, when you go down to K for Jackson for volleyball tournaments, like AAU-style volleyball tournaments? It's just court, 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 board?
I don't think we'd have enough teams to run AAU-style. Running two games at once would be really, it's a nice.
Is there a?
I just don't want to exclude, I just want to.
Carterville hosts the River to River Tournament right now, and they have two gyms running at one time, two games at once.
We want to be there and now.
Press, is there a press area, radio area? The intent of the press areas would be, you know, nowadays, most cells cell signal throughout, we'll put some data at key locations. The thought is to set up, these areas could be kind of reserved for press as well as one could be reserved for a spotlight for starting lineups, things like that. Thought as well, a couple of these seats could be reserved potentially for visiting school administration, so they're close to their people. You know, your administration's seated where you want to be close to your people. And that's kind of the intent, to have the different seating areas kind of spread throughout. And some thoughtful need to go, you know, who reserves what seat, what's sold, but the intent would be these areas would be the press and kind of spotlight areas. But at the same time, if you wanted to set up center court, a full countertop and a laptop and press would be kind of good to go there as well for tournaments, things like that.
Care to show them the dropdown areas on the other end?
Oh, the large system?
Yeah, so part of getting to this design, we toured, what, five, four or five different facilities with the admin and different billing committee. And one we went to was in Kentucky that we actually really enjoyed some of the ideas of the visual display board and this kind of lowe seating. You know, maybe this is tables and chairs, maybe it's soft seating. Could open up a space for donors to rent out these kind of VIP areas as well. Could set up programs to where students are serving hospitality food and practicing life skills, you know, with those areas. But it's just kind of creating some different areas and different opportunities for the school to use in the future, how you see fit.
That's kind of neat where it steps down. It really does take care of our face issues. Wrestling would take over the current weight room. We've already got the mats in and delivered for that, to pad the walls and turn that into the practice space for them. They would be housed at the high school now, wouldn't have to use the new school ever again. Is there a golf simulator?
Oh, yeah, golf simulator. There's some table and chair storage for the hospitality area, it's a baseball, softball storage, room for a golf simulator for the golf teams in here as well.
And the cheer dance will have covered storage in the actual multipurpose?
Cheer dance has a space, wrestling has a space, golf has a space when weather's bad to practice and improve. And in the winter time when you can't play golf, softball, baseball have batting cages, pitching areas. Track has an area to do winter fitness with their season starting in January. I think it covers a lot. We've got two gyms now, where there's a soccer need inside in the early spring with rain and weather and.
Talk about before, you know, if we ever got away from NFHS and be able to do self-production, is there anything we want to put on a list so we can make sure if we can start that up, student brands, selfs?
Kevin, Troy, a bunch of people already have like the.
I've got a bunch of questions, but I was going to reserve them for.
Yeah, they have a whole spreadsheet now.
They know more than I do.
Well, and we did hire a new CTE teacher, Tark Swinson. And he is already meeting with Kevin to talk about his classroom setup and getting things ready for the interactive media classes that he's going to be teaching half of the day when he's not teaching credit recovery. And building those productions and then hopefully moving into recording and live production of games once we get there. I think it's going to take a few years to build the program into that, I think we need to take our time and do things right and not rush into it and not be high quality.
But even for that, part of the design, part of the next steps are to meet with those groups, Kevin, and figure out, all right, which areas might we want cable hookups? Which areas do we need HCMI, you know, and figure out that tech to get those, it could be conduits and pool strings, but all that will be built into the project itself.
And once Tark gets with us, we're going to be taking him and Kevin down to McCraken County, they've got an amazing production facility, Troy, we've toured that together, it's unbelievable. May even send them over to Farmington High School in Missouri to look at their production classes that they have over there. That way he can start getting a really, a good feel for how he wants to see the company.
I think that's a very short hop from performing arts production to sports production and the same kids who'd be interested in one. Instead of having the one show in the spring, one show in the fall, they could have year-round interaction.
At the same time, all of the performances recorded by one camera.
Right.
What if we get the production crew that's got three cameras for sports to come in and record the musical with three cameras and three different angles and a switchboard and so.
West Frankfurt has that, I can't think of the name of it, they got a lot of wrestling meets, they got a lot of stuff, there's like, you have two guys that do the wrestling commentation, you know, and it's neat, obviously it's not, nothing, they're getting picked up by affiliate, but.
And I believe Kevin and Mr. Mamwaring have plans to run the cabling that's needed to get the data down to Tark's new classroom as well, so that live feed is instant as well.
And as it evolves, I mean, even there's a potential for student, you know, students to work, like we have the summer workers to start working those games and do, you know, the play-by-play or the commentary or, or, you know, some of the game day commentary, so there's a lot of growth potential.
There'll be a lot of trial and error during volleyball season of the first year, and then basketball improve and we continue to grow and turn it into a production.
Yeah, well, I guess when we, we will, the completion date is about December of 2025, so we'll, I guess, be in the basketball season, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, when we open Red Devil arenas.
But hopefully this fall with volleyball and our new board, I'll be working on this.
We have, well, and we've already had two schools reach out to us because our content on our, Lynn and Kevin have been very creative on, you know, how the new digital board is being utilized, so.
And then two gyms, we need to have boys and girls, you know, girls' RC plays, boys' RC plays after that, the JV's play in the other gym, Simon's playing, it's a little bit of a need. Thanks, Kevin.
So much.
I will say too, like with our student section, we had our one of three yearly principals meetings for the River to River Conference, and they, there was a major discussion about, did all the schools wanting to come together and all students get into games for all sporting events? And that's, when West Frankfurt comes over to us, their kids get in free at Murfreesboro, our kids get in free at Murfreesboro, when we go to them, our kids get in free to them. Just to get more student participation in kids at our school instead of out doing other things on a Friday, Saturday night.
Well, when they make a choice to travel, you know, I mean, at $4 a gallon, you know, to even add that, $2 or $3 additional, to just cut that away from the.
One thing I think West Frankfurt does that was pretty cool is once a kid, once a student attends 10 sporting events or extracurricular events, they get a T-shirt. And you come part of the club and when they wear that shirt and they get it free from there. So there's some different ideas that we talked about, that's kind of it.
You could have your Inferno club, you know, like Catch Fire, you know, like Spirit, you know, the spirit picks. Thanks, thanks, Ryan, for the idea.
Any other questions?
I'm glad to see the concession area, you're kind of facing the action because it feels like sometimes our concession people get gypped.
Can't see.
They can't see the game while they're working, so a nice incentive, you might get more volunteers if they can still see the action while they're serving, so. Thanks, awesome.
And you can get them through expeditiously.
Right.
And there is space up top, so if you had tournaments or, and you had enough concession people, then they could put out tables to sell the simple stuff, the drinks and the candy and that type of stuff upstairs as well.
The thought would be into this far corner, we have some, the electrical setup, but it would probably be a movable table set up for lighter concessions. Maybe your heavier cooked foods down here could plug in a popcorn machine, so does a candy bar, so.
Everything we heard was more storage, more storage, more storage, you can never have enough storage, but, you know, just, you know, it's not a fun use of space, but just making sure we have places to hide.
One thing they did as well, the current varsity boys' locker room, if you look at our locker room on the plans, our locker room right now has two sections. The back section that is to the north in that plan is the varsity football locker room. Since we're building the new locker room on, by the parking lot, it will go straight out, straight out to the field.
I saw that door, yeah.
That varsity football locker room is going to become huge storage, so a bunch of storage that is needed at that point, so.
Very good, all right, no more public concerns, we'll move on to employee concerns.
Down to the streets, too.
All right, moving on to old business, no, there's an old business. Passing old business, going to new business. We need to take action on approval of reimbursement for Troy Brown for his sound work during the MHS musical.
I make a motion to approve the reimbursement for Mr. Troy. Ms. Sevaldi?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Right, hopefully we don't get caught on the prevailing wage for that, I'm sure it's well in there. Second thing, on new business, approval of the, I'm sorry, this information on the student parent handbook, it was sent out. I'm sure everyone will read that diligently, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to those. Number three, building management plans for 2425, also been shared through email. Number four, enter agency agreement with Child and Family Connections, number 24. It is a recommendation of administration that the board approved entering into this intergovernmental agreement with Child and Family Connections, 24, for the next school year. Anything on that?
This is something we do every year, isn't it?
Huh?
It's young. Has anybody read the contract?
Yes.
All of them. I make a motion to approve the agreement.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have some additional approval of tuition-free students for next school year. We have the child of Mallory Swafford and the children of Andrew Winters, can I get a motion?
It's a move, second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the K through five ELA curriculum?
I have two representatives from each grade level, K to five.
So I don't have the full board packet, but at the curriculum council, we also approved stuff for the middle school.
Oh, the middle school, high school, too?
Yeah, there's six, there's six through 12 on there as well.
K through 12 ELA curriculum.
K through 12 ELA. As, yeah, as the proposals that are at your table. I didn't see 12 on there, though, did I miss it? Because I thought it was just K through five.
I have all of it, if you want me to kind of review it, Dr. Wilson.
Go through it, really quick.
Go through it. So six through 12, it looks like they're going to, middle school and high school are going to look at Common Lit curriculum. The Common Lit total is $41,000 for the most high school combined. They are also going to be looking at curriculum through Ritable. It is six years of membership for the middle school and one year for the high school because only three teachers are going to be using it at the high school. And Heather does need to get a new quote on that one because the lady's been on vacation for two weeks.
Okay.
Grammarly is going to be used by 10 teachers throughout 612 English department. There are new novels and there are some reorders that need to happen, the damaged novels that they currently use, they're $8,489.15. English nine is ordering some books for a research unit and they are not cataloged as part of the library collection that they would like to purchase as part of the adoption. Honors English has curriculum through Bedford, Freeman, and Worth High School Publishers for $4,497.57, that's for Honors English classes. The high school English department would also like to purchase two colored printers contracted through Modern Copier to be able to have color print and soon they'll design things, print things to turn in for projects and assignments in color print. Right now, the high school does not have much color print accessible, so they would like to have that as part. And that, I believe, would be a, anything, any maintenance or anything that needs to happen to those printers, Modern Copier would help with, there'd be a contract there. And then I also have Mr. White's piano curriculum, but I don't know if that needs to be adopted through English or if we want to, I don't know.
What's the grand total?
The grand total, let me see if she has it.
He can create, he can make sure everyone has this.
For six through 12, it'll be $108,581.61. But she's also still looking at an AI detection program and she needs to get that updated quote from Ritable.
Okay.
So you're looking at $103,000 to $110,000, six through 12.
Along with the 284 K through five, right?
K through five is, I don't have it.
We can add those two, the two additional supplemental items next month, so we can get the Grammarly and the, but we can approve all the other K to 12 items. We're looking waiting on Grammarly and what was the other?
Ritable.
And Ritable.
And AI detection.
Well, we'll do all.
We're going to do open court.
Open court and the, everything else as discussed with the two remaining quotes from Grammarly and.
So it'd be Common Lit, Ritable, Grammarly, novels.
Novel sense.
McMillan, Honors English, and then the colored printer contract with Modern Copier. And we are still looking for the Ritable quote and an AI detection program because right now our English departments are using multiple AI detection programs that are free. If we submit a student submission into one of those, it may say it's 98% AI. The next free one that you submitted in may say it's 64% AI. So we're wanting to find something that you can actually have a license to that is a little bit more accurate to back up our AI detection.
Kids do that?
Oh, it's, it's went through the roof this year.
All right, with that said, we get a motion to approve the K through 12 ELA curriculum as presented.
So we're.
In a second.
Second.
Mrs. Sevaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
I need to seek approval for the MOU, Murfreesboro 186 and ROE 30. Mr. Vick comes here, is there anything you'd like to say before we go through it?
Please approve. No, you know, just excited about the opportunity to partner with you guys. We just, we're looking for two districts to partner with, the other one is Coppin. This was kind of something I inherited when I took over the position. ISB kind of moves at the speed of a glacier in many cases, and they reach out to ROE 30 to implement this. So it's been going slowly but surely, so excited to have you guys in the hopper here and hopefully looking to move forward with getting some scratch cooking in place and make some partnerships hopefully with some local farmers.
That was my question, how are you, how do we select the farmers, like how does that process?
Yeah, so that'll be really the vendor that we're going to work with, which is Beyond Green. That's the business they're in is exactly what this brand is looking to implement, which is getting, going back to more scratch cooking and school cafeteria kitchens and then incorporating locally sourced food. So they'll be charged with really the recruitment efforts, but certainly will be willing to get feedback from, you know, Murfreesboro folks, you know, making any connections there. I know there's a couple of organizations in Southern Illinois, farmers, that I've connected with already, so I'm going to pass on contacts to them, to Beyond Green.
And Georgia's been utilizing for the beef facilities that are in within an hour drive, so we actually get fresh, like our army is freshman farmers in the area, so.
We've had a local funding grant through ISB, will that be, will that coordinate together that, the local?
Absolutely, yeah.
The nice thing is when we talk to Beyond Green administration. The nice thing is when we talked to Beyond Green administration team in Georgia, sat down and they did a webinar with Beyond Green. And the district that they gave as an example started with about one meal a week and has expanded to, four years later, to 90% of their, their menu is scratch cooked, so.
It was pretty neat.
It was, it was neat, and they, they just kind of grew with the bandwidth of the employees. And now they're, now they're serving more than their own district, they're, they're serving kind of a whole corridor around.
Almost went through a process of change in the palette of their student body.
Well, I was going to say, it'd be interesting to see how the behaviors change when you're not feeding them so much processed food.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty, I guess, really nice and.
Kind of manage, but yeah, still traditional.
I got to go back to go forward, yeah.
Everything comes in a circle, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Let me just say that this school was the best school to eat from the cafeteria when I was in school.
Orchard Hills is pretty good, too.
Well, I'm pretty sure Orchard Hills was closed at that point.
Well, I'm old.
Is there, you were my coach, yes.
I will say that even here, we get some apple crusts and we get some fresh baked rolls and things, as sometimes back home, they, Kitchenister provides us with the home, home, scratch cooking, so.
Very good, so get motion to approve MOU between the 186 and RE 30 for the farm to school formula grades.
All moved.
Second. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Hivaldi?
Absolutely.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I'm excited.
All right, we had this week, the press part, is this, yeah, this week, the press policy updates were emailed out. This is simply informational, we will vote on them at the May meeting. Also, informational, the the need to move next month's meeting from May 21st to May 14th.
So we can have everyone here, does that, can we look at calendars to see if the 14th works? We only had one quote provided for our serving line, so we need to have at least a sixth, seventh vote of the board. And like this meeting, we only have five members, so we could vote on the new serving line grant, so we need to have at least six members there, so. Is there anyone who, I know Mr. Beavers was not available on the 21st, it's fine, looking to push it up one week, it'll also help us with getting fulfillment before this fiscal year's over on the stainless steel serving line, so.
So that would be.
One week early.
On Tuesday?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a conflict with my work board meeting, so I would prefer it not be that, but I mean, if you can do it without me, that's fine, but.
But we really need at least six people there, so.
As long as.
I can do it.
One, two, three, four.
I may be questionable.
Beaver, five.
You can be, you're questionable on the 14th, but not questionable on the 21st.
Everyone's good for the 21st.
We'll keep the 21st, but no one can be sick because Beavers is gone with a work commitment for sure on the 21st, so.
Well, he's got a work commitment, he can call, I'm in the meeting, he can call in and vote.
Okay.
As long as it's the person.
Then we can, 21st.
It will not change the 14th.
It is work, it's with the bank.
It will be the 21st. So, that was national on, thank you.
Oh, that's great.
All right, and number 10, permission to advertise for sealed bids to sell the 1947 Dodge Coupe that was donated by Mr. Iran Ielbo. That is a very cool project.
Go check it out, it's, it's a smooth car, I mean, it is neat.
So that, just for public dollars, that will be in the visitor parking lot from April 22nd through April 30th. And bids are accepted until when, 30th?
The 30th.
Except to the 30th.
Been open on the 30th, and we are asking for a minimum bid, the board to approve a minimum bid of $4,000. And then proceeds of the sale go back into the automotive program. Make a motion to approve, this president. Mrs. Hivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
If we have a need to go in closed session.
Motion to go in closed session pursuant to Section 2 of the Open Meetings Act 5 Illinois file Statute 120-2, see to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity.
Get a motion, or second, sorry. Motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Hivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.